The time is 5:30. I'm going to call to order the Committee of the Whole for August 11th, 2025. Clerk Richmond, could you take the role?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pelu Vanaglu.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Seven are present. You have a quorum.
Okay, next we are on to the minutes. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the July 28 minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed passes unanimously. All right, next we are on to public comment. You have up to three minutes. If you could please come up and state your name for the record at the podium. I would like to also take this opportunity to remind folks that we need to follow decorum tonight. I appreciate everybody's point of view, but if we can hold off on the applause and other celebratory things, we have folks with different opinions in here and everyone is allowed to express how they feel about any matter without feeling pressure of the audience. So I appreciate it very much.
I'll go first. So I seen everybody signing that list. I was like, I ain't gonna have time, but we have step up at 6 o'clock, so I get this in. Real quickly, just want to say that I am in favor of reallocating those funds for the pod houses. I've seen what it looks like, and I don't have to go through a big, long speech about how positive having something like that in our city will be accompanying all the other things we're trying to build out in the community, because I'm sure a lot of people in here are gonna do that. So what I would like to talk about is how we get to a point of compromise. I've already talked to some of you all and others in the community who have concerns about what this might look like, and I guess we all would. Anytime we're gonna buy 60 or 50 of anything and don't have a place to put it, there's gonna be some concerns. The only thing I ask is that we do take the sense of urgency in what we're dealing with. It's something that has to be purchased immediately, and we take the brains that we have in the room, the community and the spaces we're all in, and figure out what we do with them. We have a lot of brilliant people that understand how this thing can move. We have some models to pattern off of. We've seen, you guys all know we're connected with Omaha heavily. We have a trip going out to Omaha to look at their built environment and development. So this is very timely that this is even happening. And not by my idea at all, in my opinion, it's God and having all these things being placed as it is right now. But we have a model for how this could look in multiple cities. And I spoke to somebody who gave me a model of how it didn't work in multiple cities. And I feel like if we want to be pessimists, we can look at any situation and think, okay, it didn't work there, let's forget about it all, right? But why don't we look where it did work and figure out how we make it work here, similar to how they did? And so I would just ask that we be cordial with each other and figure out how to come to the table and bring community to that space. We know that we have community solutions. We again know community keep us safe. We keep us safe. So in that same sense, in the homeless encampments around the city, like those people are taking care of each other. And so they really need resources and support to do that. And so you have folks like Mike Carl, who understand this game and just not been given the ball. And one thing I will say, as I invited folks to Lansing Empowerment Networks, Lansing 360 meeting, and we started to get support from the city of Lansing on that, I seen the mayor one time, and he made a statement in reference to that. He actually said, Mike, you know, the ball is in your hand, like hit a home run. And I'm asking for you all to give Mike Carl, or folks in the community that have been working on this forever, give them the ball, and let's see what they can do with it. And that just hasn't been done in so many different sectors. In gun violence, they finally gave me the ball. And look at what we're doing with it, right? So just with that being said, keep a community. There's concern that, you know, there's been municipalities across the country that haven't been able to make this work. I think one of the main reasons why we don't, a lot of stuff don't work is because you guys all have jobs that are already here. We're gonna add this on to it? No, bring in folks who are, who can do that work, instead of it being you all. There's community organs that are willing to do that work, that are willing to get these things cracking and take the ball and hit a home run with it. So let's pull those folks into the space. Again, just let's get there cordially. Let's figure out how we can come to the table for solutions and don't just bring problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies, I feel like we're rushing everyone. Hi, Erica Lynn. I just wanted to come and say, I wanted to acknowledge a couple of things before I just come in and say I'm in support of something, but just honoring that I know it's never a good thing, and it's not the way that we want to go when we start clearing encampments and we start suing property owners because of the way that they're allowing our unhoused neighbors to exist in their spaces. And so this is gonna cause a lot of emotions, and it's gonna cause a lot of turmoil, a lot of arguments, a lot of really big feelings that are very valid. So when this initiative, when this model was kind of brought to us, I started to do a lot of research and look into it. And there's something in Omaha that's very similar. It's something that I absolutely believe can work. And anytime I have really big feelings about the way that we as a city are handling a situation, my immediate move is to think about how better could we do this? I think this is one of those very first steps in how we could better do this. So biggest thing I wanted to say, just to you all and to our community, before we only exist to debate the pods, I want to invite all of you all, I want to invite our community to make sure that we're also talking about how we can ensure that a plan, an intentional strategy is put in place as we start having this conversation. I'm absolutely in favor of doing the first step. This crisis didn't happen overnight. The solutions are not going to happen overnight. It's gonna take a lot of time. It's gonna take a lot of time, effort, money, resources, and it's gonna take more than just the city. So I think it's important to remember that we can't always just lean into the government and the city to only do that. So I'm always gonna be here to advocate that the right people, the impacted people, the people with lived experience, the people that are working boots on the ground with our unhoused neighbors are at the table, continue to remain at the table, not just as advisors, but as decision makers. That is the way that we make sure that this plan goes. Every model, everything that we've seen in other communities didn't work somewhere, and it worked greatly in others, right? There are so many factors that are gonna go into that. You don't know what those factors are until you start with step one. Step one is deciding whether we're gonna try it or we don't. I say for Lansing, we try it. I think that this is step one in a very, 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 very long list of things that we need to do to support our unhoused community. So I just, again, wanted to say very much in support of step one of this. Just make sure that, again, community is centered. Community is leading, and the right folks are existing at the table, not just to be there, and not just the ones that we have been comfortable with, have been there before, but the ones that have something to say because they know a little bit more about what is happening day to day with our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I don't have too much to add on, but I want to add on to what Mike and Erica said. Working with my village, with my work with the Village Lansing and Lansing Empowerment Network, I really see the value of engaging our community members for these decisions. I understand that this is a really complex topic, initiative, and there are a lot of questions on how this is going to work out. But just like Erica said, I think that we need to open the door for these conversations. I think we need to get step one out of the way and start to figure out how we can implement these things. We talk about very often how Lansing has the best pieces of all of the big cities in Michigan. We have so many innovators. We have so many people that are working and willing to collaborate. So if we start to bring this here, we're the model for this. We're the model for this. We're innovated with these housing solutions in Lansing. It's gonna transfer across the state. So we have the opportunity to be a model. We have an opportunity to be leaders. So I'm in support of the modpods. Thank you.
Thank you. And could we get your name for the record?
I don't sign it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Galloway, resident of Lansing. I first just want to acknowledge that we've had some positive movement on some things that were resolved, some of the issues for some of our homeless neighbors. And for everyone involved with that, I just want to say thank you. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of Khadija Erickson, who is in support of the resolution to purchase modpod units for a new shelter option in Lansing. Our city is in the middle of a housing and homelessness crisis that's not going away on its own. Every week, I meet people who are sleeping in tents, in cars, and on the sidewalks, not because they want to, but because there's nowhere else to go that feels safe, respects their dignity, and meets their basic needs. The proposed pod community is a creative, practical step forward. It provides more autonomy than a traditional congregate shelter, gives people a private, lockable space of their own, and offers stability that can make all the difference in someone's ability to work, keep appointments, and plan for permanent housing. Khadija also wants to recognize the value of funding this project from existing budgets without adding a new tax burden, doing so in a way that gets the units on the ground quickly. This is both fiscally responsible and responsive to urgent need. At the same time, we know for this project to succeed, it will be built on a strong foundation. Community and stakeholder inclusion, the people who are most affected by homelessness along the frontline service providers must have a seat at the table during planning and implementation. This will ensure that the community's lived experience shapes the model that will work in the real world. Two, sustainable operations. These units need staffing, sanitation, site management, security, and transportation access to function well. Planning for these ongoing costs is just as important as purchasing the pods themselves. Third, transparency and timeliness. Clear milestones for procurement, site selection, and opening, paired with regular public updates once the zoning and state regulatory phases begin, will build trust and ensure that momentum is not lost. This resolution won't solve homelessness on its own, but it is meaningful, tangible step towards housing justice in Lansing. A well-planned, well-run pod community will save lives, improve public health, and give people the stability they need to move forward. Let's make sure this project succeeds, not just as an idea on paper, but as a real, working, community resource that treats every person with dignity. So keeping in mind community and stakeholder inclusion, sustainable operations, and transparency and timelines from Khadija Erickson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean French. I represent Timber Creek Ranch, Executive Director in Sunfield, as well as the Chairman for the National Lifers of America, and I am in favor of the reallocation of funds for the pod homes. Obviously, we all know that a large majority of the returning citizens end up on the streets. This is something that we'd like to be a part of, helping to get ahead of. We have a 53-acre ranch out in Sunfield, and we'd like to also figure out how we can partner up with the city of Lansing to help out with this situation. As Erica stated, there's gonna be a number of things tied to the development of this, but that is something that the community should come together and work on. But I just wanted to go on the record that the National Lifers of America Incorporated, we are interested in seeing this take place, as well as Timber Creek Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Loretta Stanaway, and I support to some extent this proposal. I do have a lot of reservations. And one of the concerns is the question of whose community is this that we're looking at resolving problems for? We know that there are a lot of the homeless who are moved into our region by other municipalities because they're dumping their homeless with us. For example, Jody Washington went out the other day, and she talked to a group of homeless people. And out of those she talked to, only three of the dozens of people she spoke to were from Lansing. Two were from California, one from Denver, two from Alabama, one from Puerto Rico, two from Florida, Eaton Rapids, three from Flint, one from Dayton, one from Southfield, one from Baltimore. And Linda Carl spoke to people requesting help with housing recently, and her contacts were from Utica, Warren, Southfield, Jackson, and Detroit. So question is, is there a way to do this that requires some sort of a residency or connection to our community before we are spending our time, energy, and resources to support people that are coming in from other locations that refuse to support them? And the prior speaker mentioned infrastructure. That is a major concern. Who's going to take care of bringing in the porta potties and cleaning them and emptying them? Who's gonna bring in the trash dumpsters? Who's going to provide the shower facilities and make sure they stay clean? Who's gonna make sure that the porta potties aren't closed up because they've been jammed full of needles, et cetera, et cetera? If we can't manage, as we have not managed in the last several days, to open a cooling center for our residents now, how are we going to add these other burdens to our infrastructure? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mike Carl. I'm a union and community activist. Luckily, today I have a rare vacation day from General Motors, so I wanted to address this because it's important to me. I've emailed most of you on the council with a plan that I've seen from all over the country. I've already helped the city once with a housing crisis. If you remember Life O'Reilly, I took all the families into the Magnuson Hotel, didn't charge the city any money. We work with the families where they're at. We have great experience on bringing communities together, bringing them here to help people with the things that they need to cut costs. One prime example is our hotel system that our shelters use, our documentation system. Some people are staying in hotels for years. I bought a hotel, and I structured a hotel program to be short term. We need to get people into houses. We need to make them taxpayers. We need to help them get into good, union-paying jobs. We need to try to make things better for everyone. But we also need to follow the guidelines in the direction of HUD. It's the quickest way to housing. We have members of HARA here today, the first time I think I've ever seen someone come from an agency and talk about this. Our numbers are staggering that aren't documented. That is one of the biggest problems in the city of Lansing is our agencies don't document those that are outside. By documenting those, it brings in more dollars for our communities. It helps us structure our programs like CMH and substance abuse training, because our numbers are correct. When our biggest shelter in the city does not document correctly, and they do their own documentation, it hurts us as a community. The last time I stood up and I talked about this, I was threatened with a lawsuit from a local shelter. They dropped it because I used their documents. The problem is, look at the inside. If we solve this one problem of HMIS entry, it not only brings more money to our community, it also takes a number and puts it to a name. It shows us a family and a story. We need to work together, more than ever, in the city. I know I've been abrasive. I know my ways are not always what everybody wants or what they expect. But we can work together on something important, because I would like to retire someday, not just from General Motors, but from helping people getting into homes. I can't be the only one that shares that ideal. I'm not here to make money. I've never been here to make money. I want to give you my resources. I want to give you this community that can help, and they want to help. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosalind Williams, and I think most of you already know who I am, quote unquote, "the red tag queen." So first, let me say thank you for the things that you are doing and have done. While it doesn't help me at this point in life, it helps other people, so congratulations to you on that. As far as with the pods are concerned, I like the idea. However, I think many of the answers have been, questions have already been posed. But one of my greatest questions is, they're individual pods. What about families? Families who need sustainability? How are we working with the educational system? And the different, because we do have people that are couch homeless, and that means we don't actually have a documented number of how many people are homeless. I was looking and driving the other day, and I saw multiple empty, empty buildings versus buying these pods. Why are we not converting these buildings into shelters? We did it with Walter French made those apartment complexes. Why can't we continue to use what we already have? We have still plenty of red tag lands and homes that I'm driving by daily that can be used for things like this transitional housing. I am so in awe of Sean French and Mike Carl and the things that they're doing. I do talk a lot with Sean French. I haven't been talking to Mike lately, but we'll be getting back in touch. But again, we are not collaborating where we should be. We are not working the way we should be, using the things that we have where we're having to get more money when the money is already there and it's sustainable. It's how we use it. I've made myself available to everybody and anybody to say, yes, I'm still going through this process. I am still sitting on somebody else's couch, but I'm making my way. But everybody doesn't have that privy. They don't have the know-how. They don't have the will. What we need to be looking at is how we're gonna make people, once we present these pods, sustainable. How long are we gonna have them sitting there? How are we gonna move them to being self-sufficient, to be homeowners, apartment holders, homeless jobs? Are we looking at all of that? These are my concerns because, at the end of the day, I advocate for children, most importantly. And how many children are we not even talking to or looking at or seeing what they need? We're looking at the encampment as a whole, but there's people that we don't see that are affected by this. I encourage you, before you all do this, which I am in support of, make sure that everybody is included in the plan from start to finish, finish to end, and then back again before we actually implement something.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Clinton Morales, and I am a graduate student in the urban and regional planning at Michigan State University, a community health worker at the Ingham County Health Department, and a lifelong resident of Lansing, and someone who has been personally affected by housing insecurity. I'm here to urge you to allocate the dedicated budget funding for transitional housing pods, a proven fiscally responsible investment that will strengthen public health, reduce strain on city resources, and create a direct pathway out of homelessness. Pods are more than shelter. They are a cost-saving public health strategy. Pods offer stability that enables outreach teams, healthcare providers, and housing specialists to connect with residents consistently. This stability is key to reducing emergency room visits, lowering hospitalization rates, preventing overdoses, and mitigating the spread of infectious diseases. It also keeps people connected to mental health and addiction services, reducing costly cycles of crisis care. Currently, Lansing spends significant resources on encampment sweeps and abatements, measures that not only cause severe harm to individuals by stripping them of survival gear, medication, and vital documents, but also escalates public expenses through repeated emergency service use. These sweeps create reoccurring costs without addressing root causes, forcing people deeper into instability and keeping the city locked in a reactive spending cycle. The financial and health impacts of choosing a different approach are clear. In Eugene, Oregon, replacing punitive sweeps with first, human-first model, featuring outreach teams, mental health professionals, and stable designated spaces, saved the city $8.5 million annually by reducing emergency service demand and improving public safety. Oakland's transitional housing model paired services with stable shelter, resulting in multiple residents moving into permanent housing within months, proving them, proving that with the right infrastructure, progress is measurable and cost-effective. To maximize the impact in Lansing, the people who live in the pods must have a central role in designing and operating their community. Their lived experience ensures the environment is functional, safe, and supportive. Equally essential is public transparency, through regular progress reports at each zoning and state regulatory milestone, with reports detailing expenditures, partnerships, and outcomes. This will keep the public informed, maintain accountability, and demonstrate measurable returns on investment. By funding transitional housing pods, Lansing can simultaneously improve health outcomes, reduce reoccurring emergency and public safety costs, and build community trust. This is not only the humane choice, this is a, this is the fiscally responsible choice. Investing in pods is investing in a healthier, more stable, more cost-efficient future for our city.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Brayman, and I am the Director of the HARA for Ingham County. For those that do not know what the HARA is, it is the Housing Assessment Resource Agency. I have my team in the back there. It is, it is a federally funded program that allows my team to directly track and establish the needs of each person who is experiencing a housing crisis in Ingham County. I have been a housing advocate in Ingham County for over nine years. I have recently taken over as the HARA Director. In the short nine months, we have worked tirelessly. We are on track to hand out 90 different housing vouchers through programs and have successfully assessed their vulnerabilities, making sure they receive the wraparound services they need to maintain that housing. We have Chris Chesson, the Assistant Director, tracking each person and entering them into our HMIS system, including the City Rescue Mission. We have our Emergency Case Management, who stepped into Sycamore Town Homes two months ago, rehousing 21 families and singles through resources already allotted in the counties. Not one of them re-entered homelessness. We created a program with Deputy Torres through Ingham County Jail, where any inmate that is being released into homelessness is directly driven to the HARA upon release to meet with the HARA specialist, where they will be given resources, and we will find them a safe place to go. I am not saying this for an atta boy, and these are only a small number of the successes that we have had in the nine months. I am saying this because I cannot continue as the HARA Director if I am not supported by our homeless shelters. We are tired. We are working tirelessly. There are so many people that we see day in and day out, and I am tired of helping a 40-year-old woman walk up four stairs because she's on dialysis three times a week and she has to sleep in her vehicle. And by the time she gets to me, her legs are so swollen, it is unbearable for her to walk into my office. I am tired of teaching new moms, excuse me, how to look at their children for possible heat stroke, possible injuries because they have to stay in cars. I am tired of having the same conversation with an unhealthy man who lost his voucher because of a psychotic break. He does not understand. I am asking him to hold on with everything that he has, but knowing that when I send him back out that door, I am risking his life every day. And I hurt the most for the one that could not hang on and chose to end their suffering with their mental health. And I do believe that was because they were very scared to enter our homeless system. I need your help. We have got to make a change, and I am so sorry. I didn't even get close to where I wanted to follow. But I do, I do want to let you all know that we have worked so hard, and we need our shelters to back us. We need a change. We need these pods. And I myself, I don't want to speak for the HARA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Mike Gorszek. I'm a volunteer with Punks Would Lunch, Tenant Resource Center, Brenda's Too Damn High, and the St. Paul's Episcopal Church in regard to homelessness. And just want to, before I start my prepared statement here, have you all seen the news? Right? We can't dawdle on this. We have an administration that's kind of unhinged, and they've just taken over a city government, and they've declared war on the unhoused. We have to get these folks into legal housing. Can't have them on the streets and leave them susceptible to this organization, and the time to start is yesterday, right? We gotta protect this community from this administration. So I'll go into my prepared statement here. We're very glad to see steps being taken to acquire these pods. This is a positive step forward towards addressing the housing needs in our community. But any plan for the pod community must include input and leadership from people who are currently unhoused or have recent experience with homelessness. Their voices are essential to making sure solutions work for those most affected. It is also important to provide a secular option for unhoused individuals, since most existing shelters are run by religious organizations. Everyone deserves access to safe housing, regardless of their beliefs. There also needs to be a mechanism which ensures that the opportunity for these homes goes to our most vulnerable. Those who are disabled, either developmentally or physically, who we know cannot successfully integrate into shelters, need to be first in line. Otherwise, there will not be a place for them, and they'll be left out on the streets. We ask for regular public progress reports, especially during the zoning and state regulatory phases. This will help keep the process transparent and ensure accountability. We also encourage ongoing communication and involvement from all parties as this project moves forward. Thank you all for moving this forward so quickly. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Joe McDonald, Housing Ombudsman for the city of Lansing, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today in favor of the Human Relations and Community Services Department proposal to purchase 50 modpods. This is a tremendous opportunity to add on to the shelter services that are currently being offered in our community. The pods are humane and safe alternative. They will not replace traditional shelters, but will supplement current capacity. This proposal opens up many layers of options to shelter our unhoused brothers and sisters. The program can be tailored to fit our specific needs, Lansing-specific needs, whether for rapid rehousing, transitional housing, for working folks, working homeless folks, or emergency overnight stays. This latter usage could include some of the most difficult to shelter, such as LGBTQ plus population and people with pets. Our homeless study identified these as critical gaps in our shelter system and action items that needed to be addressed. Two of the top reasons given for people, given by people that choose not to seek shelter are people who are LGBTQ plus and having a pet. are people who are LGBTQ+ and having a pet. They can't or won't go into traditional shelter. Just like all city support programs, there would be a residency requirement. A referral from the city agency, from the city or an agency, would be required to gain entry or access to the site. The plan would include 24/7 security with fencing all around. It would be controlled it'd be a controlled facility. Wraparound services, including counseling, employment training, and housing navigation, would be provided on-site. This model has proven effective in many other communities across the country in all climates. As an unhoused person in Jackson commented after getting shelter in a pallet cabin, having a warm bed with a roof has been the greatest gift. Finally, the pods can be easily disassembled and reassembled. As shelter capacity increases over the next few years, they could be taken down and stored if it is deemed they are not needed. But God forbid we have a large-scale housing emergency, like a tornado, fire, or some other natural disaster, that can be taken out of storage and easily put back into use. And for these reasons, I believe this is a great investment in our people, for our homeless brothers and sisters, to help them get to the next step in their lives in a humane, dignified manner, and I urge your support for this initiative.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michael Hobson, the Culture and Accountability Officer with the City of Lansing through the Human Relations and Community Service Department. I'm here to read two letters, one from Dr. Terry Frazier and another from Byron Haskins. Both of them are in your packet. I'll start with Dr. Frazier's letters. I am writing to express my strong support for the proposed purchase of affordable housing pods to help address homelessness and housing insecurity in this in our city. Our respectfully urge each of you to vote yes on this important initiative. Our unhoused neighbors are among the most vulnerable in Lansing, and it is our collective responsibility to invest in practical, compassionate, and forward-thinking solutions. The housing pods offer a dignified, safe, and cost-effective way to provide immediate shelter and stability that is one step closer to long-term housing solutions. It is my understanding that the City of Lansing has a financial capacity to make this investment and believe that it's both reasonable and urgent to reallocate existing resources, prioritize the well-being of our residents, more than just a financial decision. This is a moral and community investment. After reviewing Lansing's Path Forward report, I'm confident that purchasing the housing pods aligns with the city's broader goal of equity, inclusion, and innovative public service. The action would send a clear message that Lansing is committed to ensuring that all residents, regardless of their current housing situations, have a place in our city's future. This is not just a matter of policy, it's a matter of humanity. I urge each council member to lead with compassion, vision, and encouraged by voting yes on the purchase of the housing pods. Thank you for your service and for considering the important investment in the community. Sincerely, Terry Frazier. This is from Byron Haskins. Dear Lansing City Council members, as you well know, we have a continuing homeless problem in the City of Lansing. As a member of the Mayor's Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board, it has come to my attention that the city has come upon an opportunity to mitigate the risk of some of the impending overflow of homeless in Lansing by purchasing 50 modular transitional housing units designed to offer a safe foundation for saving money and transitioning to a more traditional permanent housing. You know from the materials provided that the units are ADA compliant with heating and cooling, and they secure lock system, including foam mattresses, integrated stores, and got to pretty much a small, tiny home. Please give positive look at this innovative project as the best available to get ahead and to of the wave and will affect many parts of our community. Until political and economic conditions that stand to extirbate homeless in Lansing is reversed, I ask that you support this initiative. Byron Haskins.
Hello, my name is Melissa Horst, and I am a member of the HRCS Advisory Board, and I'm happy to be joined by some of my colleagues today. I am here to urge you all to support the HRCS budget amendment to purchase 50 mod pods. A couple of things have been mentioned that I just want to reiterate on. One is, community input is definitely key. But to kind of frame this, give a little bit of a timeline, this was in part born out of community input. The board, about two years ago, we had a community conversation, and since then, we've done a homelessness study. And it was very evident from those conversations, the feedback that we've gotten from community members from the study, that there's a need for a flexible housing solution, you know, and that's in part because we have both a housing crisis and a homelessness crisis. You know, our point-in-time counts show a steady increase in homelessness over the past couple of years. We're also about 5,000 housing units short, coupled with a low vacancy rate. So about two years ago, the board started looking at some options in response to that community conversation. The department put out an RFI, and we learned a lot as a board about different approaches and models. And I gotta say, the model that's before you, the mod pods, for us was particularly promising for many of the reasons that have been brought up before. You know, things like autonomy for for that individual, you know, they get a key, right? They get a key to that pod. Privacy, flexibility for small families and couples, options for populations that are underserved or unserved by our current shelter services. And then there was a word that stuck out for me, which was dignity. And I was watching local local news in Greensboro because they have a similar program that they use for their winter months, and and one of the things was just like how empowering it is to be able to like have that key to that pod for that individual. We also started looking at sites, right? Which I think Kalamazoo, I don't know if they had a chance to do that before they purchased theirs, but we were so excited about this possibility that we started looking at sites. So we were thinking ahead. But the reason why we didn't bring this to you two years ago is simply because of the cost. You know, Denver's program that they started in 2023 was seven $7 million for 200. That's $35,000 per unit. Lansing, $600,000 for 50, that's $12,000 per unit. That's quite a steal, if you if you ask me, and I love a deal. So, you know, again, this was born out of community input, and we encourage you all to keep that conversation going by supporting this proposal.
Good evening. My name is Emily Siroci. I am a Lansing resident in Ward Four. I stand in support of the mod pods and their innovative efforts to address homelessness in the city. In the recent with recent data in the Lansing Path Forward Report in 2025, too many of our neighbors are living without stability and need real solutions, and it's urgent. And I think pods represents a compassionate and practical step forward. By offering safe, dignified transitional housing paired with wraparound services, and I emphasize that word wraparound, mod pods provides more than just a shelter. They create a foundation for restoring dignity, like the word we keep hearing through the different opinions here tonight, improving health and building hope. These services not only stabilize lives, but they reduce strain on emergency services, strengthen public safety, and foster a healthier community for our residents. This initiative works best when it's part of a broad network of support, including job training, mental health care, and community engagement. For those reasons, for those reasons, I urge the city leaders and community members to fully support this program. This has capacity to address homelessness in Lansing with compassion, effectiveness, and hopefully a long-term vision. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hi, I'm Sean Gailey. I am a member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board, as Melissa referenced. Melissa did a nice job of articulating some of the conversations that we've had around the advisory board. I would urge the council to support allocation of funds for the acquisition and operationalization of mod pods. I think you've heard some really thoughtful comments tonight from a lot of different groups, and I want to urge you to move forward to not miss an opportunity to do something innovative in this community. I think I have every confidence that this community can work towards working through a lot of the different concerns that were brought forward. We don't want to miss an opportunity to make perfect the enemy of good. We know that this is only one aspect, one component, of an overall comprehensive plan, but it's a great first step towards a more comprehensive solution in this community. As Melissa articulated, we have talked about this for a number of years. We I did have the opportunity to sit in and listen to a lot of community input. When we opened up a conversation about this to all stakeholders, we got some great ideas. You've got some great minds in this community to make this work. Again, I would urge your support. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Brad Clark. I am a homeowner at the intersection of Maple and Chestnut, less than one mile from the encampment, and I want to voice my strong support for clearing the encampment. I have three reasons for this: crime, home values, and economic development. I have on several occasions encountered members of that encampment on the River Trail, and it was not a good interaction. I would also like to point out that while my home value has increased over the last 10 years, it has not increased significantly, and I think that the encampment is part of that calculus. Lastly, economic development. The Villarda supermarket has been vacant for years. Do you really expect someone to redevelop that property, knowing that there's an encampment of homeless people a five-minute walk away? So let's not lose sight of the fact, the status quo cannot remain as it is. The encampment needs to be cleared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all. I'm Kelsey Hector, ED with Punks Would Lunch. First off, I'm super excited because we have everyone here that's pretty much agreeing and have been dreaming and planning about something like this for years. I know that even talking to some our unhoused residents, they're very excited and also skeptical of a program like this, and I'll tell you why. One, they're pumped because the dignity and respect that comes with a key and the autonomy over one's space is invaluable. And also, what we see is the worry that the status quo that is in our shelters currently will carry over into a program like this. I think the only way that we can get around that is to make sure that we create a coalition to run something like this that takes all the experts in the room, plus unhoused people, and puts them at the helm of making decisions and making this a program like this work. Because when we give someone, we give someone that foundation and the personal investment in their own success, that program is going to be successful. We can see it in a bunch of different communities, you know, even in Eugene, Oregon, their residents have a democratic model. And so anyone that stays there actually has input in policies that happen, keeping up with the grounds, decisions that are made, and they have a community agreement with the surrounding community to make sure that everyone's on the same page and there's transparency across the board. Right? I just I do want to point out that too often, we really do hear stories about our trans and queer neighbors who completely avoid shelters. I think we heard someone talk about this before, and it's not just because they're afraid, but they've actually experienced harassment or even a push to detransition in order to provide services. A program like this is very unique because it takes that out of the equation. Right? And making sure that we have culturally competent people that are leading a project like this, making sure that the unhoused neighbors are there, that our queer folk are in the conversation, that our housing justice experts that you've already heard from are in the conversation is pivotal. And so while, yes, I absolutely hope you vote yes to pass this, I also hope you think very strategically about how we're going to actually implement this so that we can have long-term success. I mean, this is really our chance. Right? We can we can do something really great. We got really lucky with, unfortunately, Kalamazoo not, you know, wanting to place their pod homes, and I think that just taking this opportunity, we will regret it if we don't. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Watson. My pronouns are she/her's. I'm on East Lansing City Council, and during the day, I work in public health at Ingham County Health Department as our Health Equity and Social Justice Coordinator. And two other things, I'm also involved with the Ingham COC, as well as on the board for the Tenant Resource Center. I want to say that I'm in strong support and was excited to read about the pods, and I also have learned through discussions that sometimes in the City of East Lansing, it's we just think about ourselves, but other times, it's time to think about how we support our sister cities. As a person mentioned, some of our unhoused people maybe don't come from the state, didn't seem to come from the state, but I am also aware that some of our unhoused people in the City of Lansing, because of their access to resources, are coming from East Lansing, Williamston. And so I'm just in support, hopefully, if you all pass this, of having ongoing conversations with Ingham County, Eaton County, City of East Lansing, Oakhamas, Williamston, so that the support is there for what you all are taking on for our tri-county community. Thank you very much.
Hello, Dr. Thomas Woods. I'm on the HRCS Advisory Board. You've heard a lot today, and I like some of the things that I've heard. One of the things that I'm very concerned about is, for one, please, please pass this measure. As Melissa said, we've been looking at this for like two years. It's a viable option in order to get these people, our residents, these people off the streets. I like this idea. What I am concerned about is, there's going to be, because I look at how many people are here, the number of people who are going to want to be involved, which is good, but I don't want to see a bottleneck in terms of what we need to do in order to get this thing off the board, off the ground. And we're going to have those issues. There's going to be some concerns, some issues, something like that, but I think it's going to work out in the end. HRCS, Director Coleman, her staff, I think they've done a good job of putting this all together. That's why they took two years to figure it out. It wasn't just about the money, it was thinking it through, taking a look at all the other operations that are in existence right now and saying, how can we make this work? So I think that with them on board, with me, the concerned people that we have behind me, and others who want to be involved, just want to make sure that we keep it effective, that we forget about, we don't forget about what the main purpose is, which is helping individuals who are who are experiencing homelessness. That's what it's all about. And it's going to be a different wrinkle for us in terms of us being able to help the LGBTQ community, people with families, people who have who have pets, things of that nature. I like that aspect of it. So in some ways, I hope that we kiss this, keep it simple, stupid, without doing too much to make it a difficult process, while again, not bringing all the bureaucracy into it, all the bottlenecks to it. I want to see this work because the end effect will be people, not everybody, but many people will be taken off the streets and given an opportunity to find, hopefully, homes, permanent homes, with all the wraparound services that we plan to to add to this program. So please, pass this measure. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have a comment online? Is there still someone online?
Is that from, Brian, is that for me? This is Susan. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Is this public? This is public comment?
I signed up to comment on the pod issue.
Perfect, this is your time.
All right. I've been, this is Susan Kankrow, the Executive Director at Advent House Ministries, and I had prepared a statement, but honestly, you've had you've heard a lot. All I'm going to say is that, as you know, Advent House has been around for almost 40 years. I've been there for 31 years, and I've experienced quite a bit. I've been there for 31 years, and I've experienced quite a bit of what works and what doesn't. We've done transitional housing, and I personally and Advent House support the pod concept, and so we're here to say that. I just want to be very clear, these pods, these mod pods are not shelter, and they are not permanent housing. They are more like a hotel room in that it's a bed and a place to lock up and call your own, but there would be a community place for people to shower and prepare food and that type of thing and receive services, is my understanding. There's only 66 beds involved here, and there are many, many more people who are homeless, and it certainly does not accommodate families. But the experience we've had at Advent House over the years is in providing transitional housing specifically to families, some singles over the years, and what we've seen is that it works. This is a transitional housing proposal, in my understanding. If this is what we begin by investing in this, it would be an investment in a solution because it gives people a bridge between abject homelessness and disconnection from housing and time to reconnect to housing, which is what they need, to find ways, whether that's individual housing or shared housing, but the time they need and the help they need to find ways to get there. I would be willing to offer any of my experience to this process, and I support and welcome the help of everyone here who has voiced their support. I think we have a lot of energy here. We just need to understand the opportunity, the innovation, and the limitations of this. It is a beginning. I strongly encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a proud member of the Rightness Too Damn High Tenant Union, and I want to share a statement from-
Can we get your name for the record?
Sure, Sarah. Someone who is a part-time resident at our largest camp in town, who's not able to be here and passed along this statement.
Hi, I'm a former resident of the encampment out here, and I just want to say that this is a place where a lot of people have found refuge from being exposed to the elements and have found the ability to set up camp and make dinners together and enjoy community and look out for each other, whereas a lot of people that live on the streets sleep behind dumpsters and sleep on street corners at bus stops and have to worry about someone stealing their backpack when they finally do fall asleep. A lot of people don't even get to sleep because they're worried about being robbed out on the streets of Lansing. This place, while it may not be perfect, and nothing is, it's very important for the security and the health and safety of the people involved. There's a lot of people that are putting a lot of time and effort into making sure that the area is clean and there's facilities offered like porta-johns and things like that. If Lansing wants to do something for its residents, then it should take up the responsibility of making this space into a continued livable space for those who need it. And obviously, we have a huge problem with housing inequality. That needs to be addressed, but for the time being, there's people that have had to choose living here, and I think the city should support those people in whatever they feel they need to do to continue living here at this encampment.
I also want to reiterate some of what other folks have said here is also very echoed and shared by other residents at the camp who struggle with disability and find that their needs regularly can't be met in traditional shelter systems. And as the last person that spoke online said, this is a necessary stepping stool, and when people do get housing, it helps with every other problem that's tied to the housing crisis. Like the real solution to that problem is somewhere to live. And these pods would be an amazing first step in that direction for Lansing. We've already seen like camp cleanups, dumpsters, attempts to get porta-potties out to the big camp, as well as the residents collecting trash and trying to maintain the space, but they don't have access to services that house people do. And so if we can start there and build a better community beyond the resources that a couple of people can throw together with the city's funding behind it, we can do something really amazing and help to transition ourselves as a community out of the housing crisis. So please vote yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Edward Allen. I am the team outreach lead for Advent House. I'm also on the Ingham County COC board as well. I've been doing the street outreach for three years with Advent House. With that being said, going in and out of the encampments, I've seen a lot. I think that this proposal and this idea of the pods, I believe that it will be beneficial for those who are unhoused for very many reasons. One, it'll provide shelter, a sense of safety, and also a sense of dignity as well. I think that this is another piece of the puzzle as far as providing some form of solution. No, it's not a permanent solution, but it's a piece of the solution in hopes of providing stable housing and permanent housing. Even with that being said, our team has been out in the streets, and I also work alongside with PATH as well, and they're here. And even myself have even constructed a program for employment for people who are literally street homeless, and I've developed it from the ground up. And since then, I've helped people who are unhoused get jobs and find employment, and I've been able to partner with employers who are felony-friendly and willing to give people a second chance. So I hope that you will take this into consideration, into strong consideration, to help provide a sense of safety and well-being for those who are unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Sedgwick Ennerock. I live in the first ward here in Lansing. I have lived here since November of 2020, and I moved from North Carolina. In North Carolina, at one point, I did work at a houselessness transitional facility, and you have an opportunity here. There's never enough support for our unhoused friends. We have a housing crisis. There are so many things that folks need help support for, and this mod pod community is really an opportunity. You know, we have a lot of programs that just are falling short here in Lansing. My friend Kelsey Hector talked a bit about how it has been failing our trans and our queer community, so I'm not going to spend more time lingering on that. But, you know, we do have people here in active substance use that avoid shelters because of the stigma and overpolicing. You know, folks have said they'd rather freeze and be treated like a criminal for needing help. If we want people to succeed in a program like this and connect them to services for job readiness, healthcare, long-term housing, or treatment, we have to create that centers dignity and trust. We can learn from Eugene, Oregon's Opportunity Village, where residents self-govern using a democratic process to make decisions about operations management. This shared responsibility fosters pride, stability, and accountability because residents are directly invested in their community's success. We should also take a page from Durham, North Carolina's HART program, which uses a public dashboard to show how resources are allocated. We could use something like this to show people are progressing towards permanent housing and other goals, and how holistic intersectional programming creates sustainable programs that work. That transparency builds public trust and keeps us accountable to the community. This is our chance to build more than shelter. We can build a cooperative, inclusive program that is rooted in Lansing, keeps people safe, supports their growth, and helps them move forward. It's time to trust Lansing, to lead Lansing, because we have people, the passion, and the knowledge to make this work. We just need the leadership that's willing to trust in us. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing any further comments?
Carl Tilking, founder, program manager of One Day Industries. There was no sheet up there, so I couldn't sign. I've been a long-term member of this community since 1969. This is a great idea to be able to be used as a stopgap measure, but I have a belief that we can do better than that. I've talked with you, Mr. Mayor, I've talked with several members here on this council, and I've had the opportune chance to be able to relate certain things that I know about housing as it was when I first moved to this city. I can say this right now, I am a product, unfortunately, of the housing crisis and homelessness. I started out being homeless, living in a dumpster behind the building down the street here. I lived in a dumpster that was not being utilized by them. I lived there for three months, but I also was in the shelters for seven and a half. And I understand many of my colleagues and many of the people know that, you know, it's sometimes unsafe there, yes. I worked in that environment. I know what it's like on the other side, the side that, you know, I've got to follow these rules to help these people do certain things. My idea is this, getting a tiny house village together to make it into a cooperative. It'll be a nonprofit at first, then we can make it into a profit cooperative. Out of that, those that are in that cooperative, whom I've already seen over in Madison, Wisconsin, I have not seen Oregon's, but I have seen ones near Kalamazoo and over at Detroit. I've also seen Norfolk, Virginia, these areas that I've actually seen and participated in helping to build their communities. I'll tell you what, those folks have great ideas, just like we do, but what they found out was implementing it was the problem. There wasn't enough money, there wasn't enough time. We have the people, we have the energy, we have the ability. Those are going to be the numbers we need to crunch to find out. And I think here, in this council, we have an obligation and a trust. We have to be able to help our citizens. I always believed in helping people, and since 1980, when I came back to this city from college, boom, here I was, trying to do whatever I could to help people in this community. I've been throughout the entire part of being homeless, homelessness crisis, and those that have just been thrown out into dumpsters. I've helped them as best I could. I'm a limited individual, though. I need more help, and I have got a plan. If you're willing to listen to me and give me time to be able to present that to you, I can present it in its entirety with all the options and the numbers from the companies' organizations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Reverend John Mark Warmache, and I'd like you to hear me clearly tonight because this isn't just about a policy. This is about confronting an ever-growing death-dealing reality for our unhoused neighbors and the state of the soul of Lansing, Michigan. We are here to demand a yes/否 on establishing sanctioned housing for our unhoused siblings, housing that is run by people who have already been doing this work, those who are experiencing the plight of being unhoused, and those people who have earned the trust of the community, built real partnerships with those most affected, something a lot of our elected leaders could learn from. We keep hearing talk about attracting more people to Lansing with new housing developments, but let's be honest, how dare we talk about bringing more people here when we haven't been able to care for the people we already have? Instead, we constantly destabilize them without offering solutions. The growing number of our unhoused neighbors is not an unfortunate side effect. It's the clearest indictment of the city's leadership. It's proof of where your priorities truly lie. So how you respond in this moment, how you address the needs of the poor, the oppressed, the abandoned, reveals what you really value. Archbishop Romero once said, "A church that does not unite itself to the poor is not the true church." The same is true for our cities. If we do not unite ourselves to the poor, the hungry, the unhoused, we are not the true community we claim to be. We are not something that our mayor, our city council, or our citizens can't be proud of. We can't claim to care about the people who live in this city when we turn our back on those on the margins, when we don't know their names. Because how you treat the poor is not just a reflection on you as leaders, it's a reflection on you as human beings. And while some are explicitly guilty and actively or passively supporting the current situation, all of us are responsible. Those of us speaking here tonight are doing our best to speak truth to power, and we are telling you, our leaders, that we see the injustice and we won't be silent. We hope that you'll support this initiative so that justice might take root in Lansing. But if you choose not to know this, when people say our leaders hate the poor, they're not being dramatic. They're speaking the truth born of willful inaction. You will have shown us that you value concrete and glass more than flesh and blood, that you treasure new buildings more than you do the lives of those who are suffering. So I plead with you to vote yes. Show us that justice still has a pulse in Lansing. Show us that we are not a city that abandons its own, or sit with the knowledge that you had a chance to do the right thing and choose to let injustice win. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment? Seeing none, we are going to move on to our presentations. So this council is aware, I've discussed, and we have moved C and D off of this schedule. The LEDC presentation will be done at the next meeting, and the update on the ovation will be at the next meeting. So we are going to move on to B, which is going to be the Capital Area Transportation Authority presentation, and I think we have Brad and Andrew, if you want to come on down?
Just Brad.
Just Brad? Thank you for coming, Mr. Funkenhauser. Green light is on, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Cost and members of the city council for the invitation to come tonight. You know, I smile when I was watching this robust debate because this is a very neat city. This is really where things get done and you're able to hear from your public. I really enjoy public involvement and being able to do this, so it's a timely presentation. Thank you. I will be brief on my comments tonight. I want to present to you an update on some neat things going on with CADA, but also some of the challenges that lie ahead. I first have to apologize. Usually, I have my chairman, Nathan Triplet, with me, but he is, as you know, a very busy person, and he's at a parks commission, so he sends his regrets, or he would be here. I want to dive into our strategic plan goals, and you know what? Before I do that, let me apply some comments to what you're hearing right now. It is certainly not within my purview to give you advice or even comment on yea or nay with the homeless problem and doing mod pods, but I will say this, the partnership with Director Coleman, the mayor's office, and many of you have been wonderful because CADA is doing their part in trying to bridge the gaps between the unhoused, the housed, economic development, jobs, childcare. It's a difficult problem that we all are suffering in this community, but I think there are positive signs on the forefront. With that, whatever you do with this development, other developments, please involve us in the planning of this, because I can assure you, if you are able to plan these developments on large existing bus routes, you will have equitable, affordable transportation. I can get passes to everybody in that development. In fact, I've talked to Doug Fleming at Public Housing, Carol Wood at RSVP. We're actually going to be making sure that they have passes at Walder French. I think it is a wonderful solution, and I appreciate the leadership of this council in helping guide that. It's public housing and public transit. Shouldn't they work together? You should have that expectation. You move into one of these facilities, why not have a public bus pass? Bus passes quickly have been near and dear to our heart. In fact, several of you have contacted me in the past about making sure that community groups are having their most vulnerable, supplied with transportation, and I asked staff to just give me a quick rundown. In the fiscal year of 2024, we donated $36,306. we donated 36,361 passes, 36,000 passes to 60 service organizations, $253,000. We can do more. We can do better. So the reason I tell you that is because some of these numbers do get breathtaking when you look at the scale of what is going on out there. But there's a lot more that we can do. So I tend to say that we don't have transportation gaps or transportation barriers. But if there is a barrier in someone's mind, then they do have a barrier. I'd like to take that away. I'd like to help take that away. I would like to meet with groups and have the communication about how best to take that away, because we have a very robust system in Lansing. During the pandemic, our ridership plummeted to 3 million rides. During the pandemic, I want you to think about that for a second. During the pandemic, we had shut down large bus for nine weeks. And even with that being shut down and not knowing how to handle the pandemic, we still had 3 million rides in this community across multiple jurisdictions. Last year, we climbed back to 9 million, and we're closing in on 10 million this year. We're hoping to get back to the marker in 2021, I'm sorry, in 20 pre-pandemic level of just over 11 million rides. So... But transportation has changed. So now you see things like CADA rides, which is first-last mile to take care of those areas in Lansing and even overnight service to major employers. And these are gaps that we're trying to fill. And we learned this. We learned this from talking directly to those that need the transportation. That's how we're able to solve these problems. So the traditional large bus going up and down the corridor will be there, but I think you will see it blended with other solutions as we move forward. I proudly tell you, as members of this council, that Lansing has the largest ridership of paratransit in the state of Michigan. We have always, with this council, as well as your four other millage-paying representatives, have always gone above and beyond the federal minimum. And we always get requests to do more, but it's very expensive service. So what we're going into really is an era of efficiencies. How do we do better? Holiday Service came online about a year ago, and we were asked, can we do Holiday Service? So we do four holidays now. It's open to the public, and we use our paratrans advance. It's wildly successful. I mentioned CADA rides. We launched CADA contactless payment. I mean, if you haven't noticed, everything's gone digital in the passes and the tokens. We've talked about the tokens. While traditional people don't use these anymore. In fact, what you're going to see very soon, later this year, is the tap-and-go. You do it at the gas station. You're going to just be able to go in and tap on the bus or the smaller vehicle if you're on CADA rides. Bus shelters. We've redone 10 bus shelters, added five. We have 12 more on the way in the city of Lansing by the end of the year, beginning of next year. Public input opportunities are very important. We have designed a system called Listening Bus, where instead of having people come to public meetings that are inconvenient, we get on the bus and we have the public meeting on the bus. Since 2023, we've had 28 sessions, 27 routes, 565 responses. We've launched a language line transition service, translation service on multiple routes, and also a call line where we can we can very easily do real-time translation of 240 languages, including sign language, American Sign Language. Upcoming is going to be a project called our COA. In the transit world, that's a very exciting term. To most people, it is just a big study, where it is a comprehensive study, kind of in the city realm, but it's in the transit world. And it's the first time we've done a COA at CADA for about 18 years. And it is top to bottom, public input-heavy. What would you like to see? Where do you want to go? How do you connect folks? You'll see more on that. It's going to be very important. Organizational strength. We have just gone through our federal review. I've gotten a lot of questions about how we've been affected by the federal government, change in administration. We just finished our inspection, if you will. Every three years, we go through a triennial review. For the second triennial review in a row, we've got no findings. That's somewhat unheard of. Very proud of that. And the way we do that is we basically prepare for it and do a mock run with consultants that know the landscape of the land and know what's coming up and what's important. And when they see deficiencies or things we need to fix during the year, we do it. So very proud of that and staff for that. I'm also proud to announce that we have acquired, and in our bus garage is the first 40-foot electric bus in Lansing. It is going through safety checks right now. And in a few months, with our other electric vehicles, we will be launching that into service. We currently have eight other electric vehicles, all GM, Bolts and Equinoxes that we used for driver transportation. But this is a complicated area across all industries. We're trying to learn how far an electric bus is able to move through the system based on our current fleet, because we've got to be able to answer the question when a body like this asks me, can you ensure that we will be able to maintain service with this vehicle? I need to test them out. I need our maintenance folks to be comfortable with the batteries and the charging systems. And so we're now very proud to get into that realm. Last year, CADA opened up Safe Place Initiative. We're the first transit agency in Michigan. This is a national outreach and prevention program for vulnerable youth. Safe spaces for individuals under 18. We've trained our staff. You'll see the stickers on all our vehicles. You've seen them in other states. If someone is at risk, contact a driver, and we have an immediate contact system and know how to take care of that. I talked about the language line. I know I'm moving quickly, but you'd go on forever. And I know you've got a lot on your plate tonight. The last thing I want to mention is regional mobility. I was going to start off with that, but I want to end with this, because people have different definitions of regional mobility. A seamless network of transit connections across jurisdictional boundaries that support the transportation of all residents in the tri-county area. This is a tall order that we've been working on for three years. I am proud to announce tonight that Delta Township is putting a .75 mils public transit ballot issue on the November ballot. It's not a CADA ballot issue. It is very similar to Meridian Township and Ingham County, where they draw down and they design the system they want. They are very interested in connecting into the Lansing system. There are also connections that were built over the last couple of years. So feeding into the Route 3 extension out past the Lansing Mall are two connectors that are ironically using disposed CADA minivans that were on the disposal block. And we ask the question of, can't we just sign the title over to another transit agency who needs these? I mean, this is a simple step, but this is how it's set up right now. You get the money. You draw it down. This is your jurisdiction. You move on. We donated those and signed those over to E-Trans, and they began training drivers at a less than, you know, the bus drivers are CDL-trained, and it's an advanced level, and it's a lot of training. And so you can get them started, customer service, smaller vans, by using a smaller connector service. You have a direct connection from Charlotte and Grand Ledge. Why is this a big deal? You've got, you're pushing 400 rides a month in these vans of people who are tapping into the Route 3, coming in and out of Lansing. And this is on, like, borrowed vans and entry-level people that know how to provide customer service. And this is how we built this. The 3 extension that we put out there, which ultimately would be paid for by the Delta Millage, has over 5,000, just in that section from the mall out to Delta Crossing where those connections are. 5,000 a month, they've topped out there. This is wildly successful service. And the last thing I'll note for you is, what about Clinton? We meet with Clinton at the beginning of September. We've put in a grant to see if we can tap into a downtown CTC connector route going north. This would effectively open up all three counties on the Transit App. Why is that important? Because the Transit App is a nationally-used transit app. Anywhere you go, we use it, because we put a feed out there. But if all three systems tap into that, you can move between all three systems very effectively and very easily. In fact, as I was brainstorming, whether you do this project or any other project with housing, we have real-time tracking of this system. So we can have monitors at these locations where someone can go and look at this and say, I want to go out there. I want to go over here. I want to go to a doctor's office. I want to go pick up my kids. And they can plan that route. I implore you to think about this, coming from a transit official. The connection between places. You talk about building places and how important those places are. That is a moment in time. Then they get up and they need to go to work, and they need to go to daycare. They need to go to the doctor's office, or they need to go to an employer. Let me help design that and provide that transportation for those in need. Those conversations are very important. I apologize. I'm all over the place. Talked about the millage. I think that's all I have, President Cost. I'm sure that I slipped over some important things. We have a new website that's coming up soon. Talked about the Safe Place. Oh, of course. We bought a building downtown. We expect that to go online very close to what's going on with City Hall. Been working very closely with the mayor's staff. And what I can offer to you is an exciting, I think it's very exciting, where we are actually going to be redoing Grand Avenue. It's kind of tight there with a ramp and its walkway. We're going to open all that up, and you're going to have kind of a corridor there right across from City Hall. So our idea is that you're able to come right into the city, have that gateway there. The building that we acquired is the old Greyhound building. We have already started our comprehensive planning on that with a grant from the state. We acquired the grass property in the front of that, and we're working with staff to consolidate that into one parcel with the hope of expanding that in the future. My vision, if you've been to Ann Arbor on 4th Street and you see the Cantilever shelters and it's up and down the street, imagine Lenawey there between Ovation and City Hall at the CTC. One very important component of this, which is very related to the conversations tonight, is we're going to have a 1,000-square-foot community center on the backside of that building. What is it going to do? It's going to do what we need it to do. It's going to be a conversation that we continue with the city partners behind us, partners out there, where we triage folks. We are able to get people from point A to point B, but they have needs. And so we have been involved in helping provide some of those needs initially at the CTC, and then moving folks to shelters or triage them on medical facilities. We have people that are looking for jobs. They're looking for, we've supported refugee services. And you have folks come in on Route 8 in downtown and will need language services. Some of them are looking for something to eat. So this is kind of a one-stop shop. It's going to be, if you need help, you can get help there. But then we will transport and have a ride to wherever the location is that they need. That is my quick overview, President Cost. The last thing I will tell you is this. The bad news is, like most agencies, our federal and state grants are plummeting. We saved our COVID money, and we banked it. And let me reverse that. We spent it, but we saved our cash and invested funds, anticipating a shortfall. The CADA Board budget is going to public hearing this month on the 18th. Open to public comment. Please come by the meeting. But we're looking at about a $12 million shortfall. That's $1 million a month. We planned for it. We planned for it. We're able to sustain service right now and continue some of these programs, hoping that we get a little bit of a turn here or there and looking for other grants. But the warning is, the yellow light is, is a year from now. If it stays the same, to balance the budget, we're going to have to do pretty significant cuts, 10% maybe, and that would affect all jurisdictions. We're planning for it. It's going to be a continued conversation throughout the year. There are going to be no surprises. And all public agencies are facing this right now. But we planned ahead. You'll see some pretty significant cuts in transit service across Michigan right now. So we're about a year ahead of our partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, first of all, thanks for being here. We certainly appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Just your accessibility, just in general, we appreciate. You've been a member of my constituent contact meetings. I've seen you out in the community. I know that you do ride that bus often and talk to folks. So thank you. We appreciate that. That said, with regard to the move downtown, I am super, super excited about, you know, kind of the southern activation of downtown. And obviously, you guys are a huge part of that. But I'm also concerned, obviously, about the south side of the city. And so as you move, there is some fear on the south side that you're going to leave a hole over there on Trantor Street. Now, I know that's not accurate. But could you just very quickly talk about what the future of that Trantor site looks like?
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. It's a fair question. We're not moving the Trantor facility downtown, and I should have clarified that. Thank you. The idea is that we bring the customer-facing folks downtown. My staff, the board of directors, marketing, planning downtown into that facility so that they are able to provide face-to-face customer service across the street from those that are using it. And we're very excited about it, because it's the former Greyhound building. I can't wait to show you the inside of this building. It's been, it's just been sitting there, and it's been well-updated in 2000. And it's got so much rich history that we're really putting some thought into how we are more of a custodian of it for the citizens of Lansing, because there are a lot of folks who would grab a bus there to go to college. I heard a story about somebody dropping off, somebody at the Vietnam War, heading off with their bag over their shoulder. So these pictures exist. Maintenance operations will all stay at the Trantor site. I should have just answered your question.
Appreciate it. Just a couple more. Maybe I missed it. I didn't hear you talk about the partnership with the Lansing School District. And since it's rather new, but we certainly have, you know, we have a year or two under our belt at this point. How is that faring? Have there been any unexpected hiccups? How have we adjusted? Where are we going with that?
I think we have had a great success with Lansing School District. In fact, we meet with the superintendent monthly. Every new school year, we kind of lay out goals and so forth. But it's tough. It's tough, because when kids are, kids will be kids, and they're out in the public. And so we have fights occasionally. So there's been an uptick in that over the last couple of years. But I offer this to you. We cleared out that café, and we offered it to the school district for their resource officers. So I'm very pleased with that partnership. I'm very pleased with the partnership with LPD. And we offer overtime services to a number of law enforcement officers. And as we build this community center, it's really going to serve as a campus across the street. It's going to be one campus. And so we've got more planning to do. It's, Councilmember Hussein, it's tough down there. It is. But I embrace this as, this is our city. These are our citizens. And we provide transportation to everyone. So it's not perfect. You know, when you wish on, I wish this, I wish that. But as we get into the new school year, we may be adding some new resource officers. And if we need more, we will. But I think it's going to, it's always going to be kind of a a tough situation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Lastly, I've long wondered, right, prior to you coming on as lead for CADA, why we did not, or I should say, why the authority did not, or I should say, why the authority didn't do some work in terms of diversifying revenue streams with things like BusRaps, right? And so I'm thrilled to see that we are actually engaging in those types of programs at this point. So I guess I'm curious, one, what has been the financial impact of, as an example, the BusRap advertising? And then, two, are there other similar opportunities we're exploring at this time? And then I promise that's it for me.
No, those are great planning questions, and being a planner, I appreciate those. I can't speak to why the revenue streams were not explored before. Advertising on buses is kind of a catch-22. Some large urban authorities allow even greater advertising, because as you get near the airport, you know and you can see who buys up the advertising. I mean, it's pretty obvious when you look at billboards. We have some restrictions, some heavy restrictions on what we put on our buses, but, and these are all vetted by legal counsel to not infringe on anyone's First Amendment rights. So we could make more money, it's not a great money-making endeavor, but we are also able to use that media for our own advertising, so you've seen a number of things, whether they're art or the Barbie bus or these things, and they, even the Juneteenth bus, it's really drawing people's attention and got them interested in using transit. So some of it's subjective, some of it's numbers. Are there others? Yes. In fact, when I was in Tacoma, Washington in the 90s, we did advertising in shelters. There are folks that would like to do advertising in shelters, and there's big business in that, but, and I say this respectfully to staff and the mayor, is that you're getting into right-of-way sign code issues, and I don't want to go down that path yet. So do we have other ideas? Absolutely. And if you don't mind me saying so, the first one is offering a seat to Delta Township for a sum of money to provide transportation.
All right, I've got Vice President Carter.
Thank you for being here, appreciate your report. You mentioned earlier regarding the listening bus, what were some of those feet, or top feedbacks from those individuals who participated in that survey or that tour of just giving some of their insight? And how are you planning on using some of the information that was received?
Yeah, great question. Not that yours weren't. Some of the most common comments that we get are about better service, frequency. Hey, if you could have more frequency on the Route 8, if you could have more frequency on the Route 1, if the bus could go over here, go over there. Where that really makes an impact is that we're able to look at bus stop locations, we may even look at routing in a particular year. We may look at hours of operation, whether we can open up later service. So it absolutely has an impact, and from my training as a transit planner in the Seattle area, if you have someone that wants to use transit, we should help them. So it's very valuable input.
Thank you. And also with the, with you being proactive on the potential 10% cut down the road with the federal funding being cut, how do you plan on accommodating the capacity with all of this new growth, especially if you have the proposal on the November ballot to expand those routes?
Yeah, that's come up a lot, especially with the millage, especially with the millage-paying authority. And so there is a blending of the service like the Route 3, but the Route 3 extensions, services outside of the authority are grant-funded or contracted. For instance, Michigan State service is contracted. We will have, and I believe this in my years of doing this, is that you will be able to put more service out if you combine these contracts. Some of you may or may not know that Ingham County has their own transit system, used to be called NTRAN, used to be red buses. Michigan State used to have their own buses. Those are both now contracted to CADA and we're able to dispatch, use the same vehicles, the same drivers. So the theory is, if we're able to continue doing that, there will be significant efficiencies in being able to absorb some of those costs. Quite simply, the millage-paying authority members will not experience cuts if we're not looking at those contracts. That's our core service.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Okay. Seeing none, I'll quickly say this, I appreciate your responsiveness, especially with Michigan Avenue.
Yes.
As someone who rides the bus, it's exciting to hear the tap and go, because I'm always looking for that bus fare and cash that I don't ever carry. But I appreciate that you pick up the phone every time, and, you know, we've worked through the construction on Michigan Avenue because it has been a nightmare, and I appreciate seeing the new bus stops going in and many places that people utilize them, so your responsiveness and work is appreciated.
Thank you for the invitation tonight.
Stand up.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going to move on to number six, item E, which is a resolution for a budget amendment for HRCS carryforwards for fiscal year 2425 to fiscal year 2526, emergency transitional housing. I believe we have some folks from the department here. And then if you want to, make sure the green light is on, state your name for the record. I'm not sure if you have a presentation or you're just here to answer questions, I know you're prepared.
We do have just a brief overview of what's going on.
Yes, so my name is Jake Brower, Chief Strategy Officer for the City of Lansing. It's a pleasure to be before you. I'm here to speak at least to the resolution itself, and we have the HRCS department representatives at the next table over, as well as Roy Plowman, to speak over the logistics of this resolution. So right before you, to just quickly move through, the Department of Human Relations and Community Services completed a homelessness study that was recently released, addressing the direct needs of Lansing residents experiencing homelessness, where before they've conducted an RFP for modular housing structures, and recently identified special market conditions, providing the opportunity to purchase structures at a reduced price point from the original estimate of approximately 1.3 million, and where through this market opportunity, they seek to purchase 50 mod pod multi-use structures. This would be 34 units measuring eight by eight by eight foot, and 16 units measuring eight by eight by 16, and whereas these will be used pursuant to the...
Jake, can we back up to that number that you just said?
Absolutely.
Did you say 1.3 million?
That was the result of the RFP that had been previously released as to what it would cost for an approximately equivalent number of units.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see that in the resolution, so thank you.
Oh, yep, that was a little extra flavor. And so these units will be used to address the homelessness crisis, particularly a gap that was found in the homelessness study, whereas adjusting for known expenditures in the last fiscal year, the HRCS department has identified three accounts in particular that sum up to about 645,000 available unspent from the FY '25 allocation of their basic human services allocation, which they would like to draw forward. And so this resolution would make that immediately available as we wait for the final balances to settle for the remaining HRCS allocation. And so if you have any questions as to the resolution itself or for the programmatic explanation, I know we're running close on time for the city council meeting, but we're here to answer everything you may have.
Hi, good evening. I am Delveta Moses, HRCS. I have with me Daphne Whitfield, Contract Manager. We also have Amy Crank, Contract Administrator. We have Daniel Spencer, Contract Manager. We have a whole team here, if I miss somebody, you guys, just excuse me. We have our Culture and Accountability Officer, that is Michael Hobson, and we also have Kim Gillespie here, she's our Community Liaison and Critical Services Coordinator. And so we are here today just to speak briefly about the mod pods. You guys have heard a lot today, and so I'll try not to repeat what you have already heard, but a lot of the things we heard here today was about the housing crisis. We heard about necessity, we heard about dignity, respect, health, and well-being. And one thing that I would like to add is that according to an article published by The Pallet Corporation, shelter villages and pods often bring access to social services that offer stability, safety, and dignity, which facilitates transition out of homelessness and helps to naturally alleviate conflict. And so when you alleviate conflict, safety is increased, public safety is increased. And so I thought that that was an important fact to bring up to this body. And so with public safety increasing, that's one of the reasons we are envisioning creating a mod pod community, which is the safe outdoor spaces designed to address homelessness in the City of Lansing. This is in line with the recommendation of our homelessness study, where they recommend that we consider safe outdoor spaces. And for those of you that may not have, are not familiar with it, we do have copies of our homelessness studies with one of our, one of the members of our team. This trauma-informed design, the mod pod community, will contain 50 housing pods. We will have 36 single units and 14 double beds. The goal is to target working age individuals ready for housing stability. The three-to-six-month rapid rehousing program will help guests transition from homelessness through personal assessments and services. We will also have onsite security and staff 24 hours, seven days a week, and we also anticipate with your approval, having a resource center, which will serve as housing, as a housing navigation center. We will have case management and workforce development. We plan on having hygiene facilities, showers, laundry, laundry rooms, lockers, a kitchenette, and community space with a TV and seating. We are also looking to have secured outdoor spaces intended for guests and communal spaces to promote social connection and well-being. We talked about services, a lot of people came up and they were talking about services. Well, we thought about that as well. We're looking forward to having case management, job training, healthcare, financial literacy, rent smart, mental health and substance abuse support, housing navigation, and transportation assistance. Pets will be allowed, but the criteria will be determined. The mod pods are intended to help meet the needs of the population, and we intend on working cohesively with housing service providers that are already available. We hope to serve as a complement to the already existing shelters in the area. We want to serve as many guests as possible, and so at minimum, we plan to impact at least 66 guests annually. We hope to continuously operate at a maximum capacity. There will be a screening process in place for our guests to ensure that the guests are City of Lansing or Ingham County residents. We anticipate going through the COC's coordinated entry program utilizing the HUG criteria for providing services. As far as an operation, as an operating plan, the intent is to contract it out through the procurement process, and we will send a RFP out for bids at the appropriate time. There is a role in this for everyone. We can't do it alone. HRCS and the City of Lansing can't do it alone. Your support and the support of the community is very necessary. We look forward to having meaningful collaborations with all community partners, those with lived experience, those directly involved with doing this work, and advocates. And we say advocates because advocates are very important, because hearing them advocate keeps us accountable. The timeline, we would like to have this done as soon as possible, but as you know, everything has to go through a process. We have to have the approval process, we're looking to have the approval from you guys this evening. And upon approval of the resolution, we will begin to work on and finalize that timeline. We will have to meet some zoning requirements, requirements for habitability, and go through the licensing process, which typically takes about nine months. After licensing, we can break ground. If all goes well, we would like to break ground in March of 2026. We don't have a specific location identified for this community. We want to explore using city-owned properties or private land. We want to also explore the potential of working with hospitals or churches or areas of parks that are not as well-used, and we welcome any other opportunities or suggestions. We feel confident about the mod pods, as they have generally been successful in promoting sustainable and affordable living. However, we do realize that there are pros and cons to everything. There are few communities that face challenges or perceived as failures, not because of the pods themselves, but because of the lack of funding, zoning challenges, infrastructure challenges, or lack of community support. We do know that there are several success stories, and the pods have been successful in many cities, including Toronto, Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, Denver, and others. We plan on being very intentional and learning from both the successes and failures of others, and we do know that there are a lot of the pod communities that are working out very well for the people. So we are committed to diligently working on dignified, safe options and solutions to combat homelessness, and due to the extensive evidence-based research, we are confident that the mod pod community will be a viable solution or approach to helping combat homelessness in the City of Lansing with compassion, respect, and dignity for all. Thank you.
Okay, going to open this up to questions from council members. Councilmembers Patafor.
Sure. First of all, I want to thank you, Ms. Moses, Ms. Whitfield, Jake, Ms. Plowman, for being here tonight. I had a couple of questions, and I think I sent them ahead to the department, so they shouldn't come as too much of a surprise. Could you, you mentioned March of 2026 is hopefully groundbreaking, could you explain what we anticipate the costs of storage and relocation to be for the mod pods, all 50 of them?
I want to refer that to Roy.
Good evening.
Me.
The logistics fee for relocation, product handling, and storage of the mod pods will be a one-time, not to exceed $20,000 fee. That includes a no-cost to the city storage option.
Is that inclusive, included in the 645,000 dollar transfer we're approving, looking at tonight?
Correct. It's about 600,000, or it is, 600,000 for the units, and then the remaining funds will cover the logistical costs and a little bit for contingency.
Okay, thank you. Two other questions as it pertains to cost. I think we've, you fleshed it out a little bit in the discussion of using perhaps city sites versus other citing. I know Kalamazoo's, one of their major hurdles was the citing costs that were between 3.5 and $5 million. Do we anticipate, what do we anticipate costs to getting this set up here in Lansing?
Yep. So we're still discussing this with our code department and public service, there's various options, so this cost with the City of Kalamazoo included site acquisition. We're still looking at whether or not to, we would be using city property versus private property or other options that would be provided via partnerships, and so we're looking at providing these at a sustainable cost to the city contingent on available funds and feasibility.
Mr. President, you might have a, okay. And then the other question I have, Ms. Moses, you talked a lot about a lot of the great services we hope to offer onsite. Do we know, might be not directed at you, but to Jake perhaps, what the operational cost of this was? I think it was 750 to a million a year in our neighbors to the Southwest.
Yep. So I can defer to HRCS's studying of this issue, but we think that 750,000 is approximately in the range of what we'd expect for operation on a yearly basis. We have this immediate funding available from carryforwards, this resolution, and future carryforwards of HRCS funding. There have been several federal and state grant opportunities that HRCS is investigating to see about potential funding sources. We will be looking at future funding rounds of county homelessness funds and using basic human needs allocation. and using basic human needs allocation as a last resort for funding in future budget years. And so through a collection of sources, resources, partnerships, we're grateful for the many people who provided public comment and expression of support, particularly hearing from other local community organizations and so forth.
Okay, I have two more. One is, thank you Jake for that, by the way. Well, I'll ask the first one because I can't remember the second one. I'll ask the second one because I can't remember the first one. For the HRCS department, we've heard the term quite a bit, and we've also heard a lot of different explanations of what it is we're looking at here tonight. Could you please define the term transitional housing? So our expectations are clear about what we'll be using the MOPods for in the city.
Hello, everyone. I'm Daphne Whitfield. So transitional housing is housing that is used usually short-term. The types of individuals that oftentimes use transitional housing are people that are, and I'm trying to say this right in terms of the terms, they are ready, or they have certain things in place where it's a short-term way for them to get to the process of getting to permanent housing. And so the way that we put together the MOPod community is for it to be three to six months, a short term for them to get themselves together, get the wraparound services and the support that is needed in order for them to go move towards permanent housing.
So it's like three to six months is about how you define it? This is not like an emergency rehousing situation where we have to move someone that night? That, that's a different program, correct?
Right, right.
And I think I also, I think I remember the other question, that clearly what we're doing tonight is authorizing the purchase of the physical structures. We have, as I've heard tonight, a long way to go before we're ready to call this operational. Is that correct?
Correct. There'll be subsequent zoning that will have to go through the city council and regulatory approval from the state of Michigan.
I just wanted to level set because there was a number of, you know, doing this. We buy these, it's not, this will not be operational in 2025.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I've got Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you all for being here. This sounds wonderful. Could you just speak a little bit to the, I guess, the structure with weather and temperatures and a little bit about that, about how it is helping support people through the inclement weather and those type of things? Thank you so much.
So I'll speak to this particular product that we have because when you talk about temporary housing, there are a lot of manufacturers. We, our product is MOPod. The house is either, like they stated early, or 16, I mean, eight by eight by eight individual compartment, or there are 16 by eight by eight, which houses two. They are made of aluminum. They are, they have been treated with, I believe it's ARZEL, A-R-D-Z-E-L, and I might be saying that wrong. But it is a substance that you generally put on items to ward off moisture, molding. They are, they come with the bed. It has storage. It has a foam mattress, nice foam mattress. It also has a heating and a cooling unit with it as well. It has been treated for, to be fire-retardant. I just had a conversation with one of the VPs from the company, and he was saying that one of their communities, actually there was somebody that got caught actually cooking drugs in one of the pods and had left and left this like little burner on. It burned for 38 minutes. The MOPods that were next to it, and they were six to eight inches apart, never affected any of the other houses that were around it. It burned internally. And then they were able to came, come in and, and take care of it. This person was not in it. Oh, Jesus, let me let y'all know that. The person was not in there. But that gives you an idea of how retardant it is in terms of fire. In terms of the weather, it has a slanted ceiling. It is able to handle, there are a thousand of them right now that are deployed in, and forgive me for having a brain freeze right now, in Colorado. And I can verify that for you because I'm having a little bit of a brain freeze. But there are a thousand of them that are deployed right now in Colorado. They annually have more than 10 feet of snow. Here in Michigan, we have six to seven. Its roof can handle four feet of snow with drifts and have never had any issues with it. In terms of the rain, they have a trademark proprietary way of the pods connecting themselves called an E-lock that ensures because of its sealing that water won't get in. And yeah, it's interlocking design is for that reason. It has a seal around it as well, so it won't be any leaks. The windows in the back are egressed, so if there was an issue and a person needed to get out of it, there are actually four windows on it. But if they had to get out because there was an issue immediately, it's egressed in the back for them to be able to do that for emergent situations. Did that answer that for you, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And then maybe Jake, this might be a question for you. I know we've been talking about like code and things like that. So how are we looking at, you know, making sure that the pods continue to be up to standard so we're not, you know, being a part of, you know, a problem having unsafe shelter?
Yep, so we've been coordinating directly with our code compliance. They've sent us a list of requirements, and we've been gathering information from the manufacturer, information about the assembly, the construction of the units, what is included, what is required to play, put them in place. And so far, we're doing fairly well as to getting all the necessary approvals there.
So from code, they feel positive that this would be a good purchase as far as meeting our requirements here locally?
Yeah, I mean, they're mostly concerned about the code aspects. They're not speaking to the, whether or not we should or should not have the units, yes.
Right, that's what I mean. Because if they say it's not going to be code, then we wouldn't want to make the purchase. That would be a council decision.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I've got Councilmember Pelley Von Aglou.
Thank you, President Cost, and thank you so much for being here this evening. I, for one, am very pleased that we're speaking on this tonight. But I do have a couple of questions based on some things that have been said this evening. So the first item is that there's going to be a screening process for folks to be able to utilize these pods. But we often hear about our unhoused community members who have been through an encampment sweep, let's say, or having to move from one location to another, and they lose their documentation. So I, I know that there's a registry. I know that if you have an ID or some sort of verification, you can prove that you're a resident of this city or county. But is there a Plan B for those folks who need and seek shelter but don't necessarily have that documentation with them? Is that something that's being considered?
I, I do believe that there are things in place for when people lose their, lose their documents. For example, HRCS has something in place where we help people get their birth certificates and things like that. But we will definitely make sure that that is something that's taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you. And my other question had more to do with the snow and inclement weather. So thank you, Councilwoman Brown, for asking that question. That was one of the concerns I had is the durability of the pods, but you've been really thorough in addressing that. And the last thing I'll say is that, you know, I think it's great that we're seeking grant dollars in a variety of spaces and areas. But as has been said so many times before, councilless body, you know, we speak through our budget priorities. And so if we're going to move forward and purchase these pods, I just encourage myself and our colleagues to ensure that we are keeping this, you know, these measures at, at top of mind when it comes to sustainable funding in the future because the last thing I want is to dive into this and then not have a sustainable plan for funding this. And so I encourage all of us to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other council member questions? Oh, Vice President Carter, I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you all for being here, and thank you for just sharing an in-depth first step, I would say. And you may, you may have already heard the importance of our community input and those who have lived experiences is going to be crucial to this development. One of my questions was regarding, it's a little bit about the weather increment. I know Joe McDonnell had mentioned, in the event if there's a storm, will it also, they are, they can be collapsed and then moved? So in the event there is something that is, where we have to seek shelter, how quickly will we be able to navigate those individuals into a safe place? Will there be conversation in those contingency plans?
Yes, there'll, there'll be conversations about that. I think you make a very great point, and we'll make sure that that's taken into consideration. And then also, you mentioned that there are 36 single and 14 double. What would the double consist of? Would it consist of two adults? Is it, is there room for families? I know we've mentioned a little bit, heard a little bit about that in public comment.
So this particular housing, and what I want to say is that we do understand, first and foremost, that we have a very, very dire situation when it comes to families. And so when we started really looking at who we would address when it came to these pods, we are taking our direction from the homeless study, homelessness study that we just had. Now, it did make reference to the, the family issue that we have, but it spoke even more to the single individuals and even in special demographics such as veterans, those that are often medically barred, individuals that, like many of the people that spoke, that are in wheelchairs. And because they have ongoing issues, they are not able to stay in shelters or, or single, just single individuals. And so that is, those are the bodies or demographics that we really are pushing to use the MOPods for and staying in line with the, with the homelessness study that we just did.
Thank you. And then one other question with, I know you mentioned that there will be storage within these MOPods with some of the individuals who were in those encampments, and a lot of their belongings, personal belongings, were either destroyed or missing or whatnot. Is, what is it, is it adequate for their personal belongings? Or if there is an alternative, maybe a storage unit that many of these belongings would go to that's going to be onsite and maybe customized for those individuals?
So in the rooms, there is storage, and it's a lot, but it's not, it's not like that. But we are looking at getting lockers as well, sizable lockers for people when they come in and they are, we're calling them guests when they are part of the MOPod community. So there will be additional locker space. But we also know that there's going to be a lot that they are probably going to eliminate when they come in. And I don't mean take away because it's not theirs. It's just that there are learning curves that will be adapted for people. When they come in, they'll learn how to manage the stuff that they have and put things where they need to be at within their homes and then also in these lockers. So I don't think it'll be as much as they currently have while they're unhoused. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you. And then a question to you, Jake. With the operational costs that you were able to provide us from Councilman Spatafor, does this also include the resource center that will be onsite?
The resolution itself only speaks to the acquisition of the units themselves and their immediate logistics. That will be discussed in further detail in future proposals as we get this farther along to completion. So unfortunately, I don't have the full details to express today.
Okay, thank you.
Got Councilman Brown again.
Thank you. Relating to, I know you guys spoke about the timeframe transitional, temporary, three to six months, and that, you know, you're looking to evaluate who is accepted and who's not. Are those matrix going to be community-led as well as available to ensure transparency and fairness? And then also, we know that each individual situation is different and very challenging. You spoke about individuals with medical conditions and disabilities. Sometimes, you know, different things happens, medical appointments. So what if an individual is in a pod? Are we evicting people if it's seven months or eight months? What are the thoughts of the processes? And of course, I know, I'm sure, let's know what the goal is. But could you guys speak to that? The process of getting people in as well as, you know, the supports that we know that we would want to provide? But what happens if, you know, there's different situations? Thank you so much.
Well, we, we don't anticipate kicking people out. That's, that's not what we want to do, but we want to make sure that their wraparound services are intentional and intensive to get to move them along to where they need to be. And then you had another question about the matrix. You said?
Yes, it's, you know, we, you guys talked about kind of screening and making sure that individuals are kind of ready to receive services. What, what does that look like or has that been thought out thus far? I know there's a process, and we're talking about March, but just want to kind of know what the thought around that is.
Okay, we will be using the COC, and they will be utilizing the HUD requirements. We haven't gotten really far in the process because we're waiting, you know, waiting for the approval of the resolution.
Okay, that, that makes sense. You're basically saying you're going to use the COC and the HUD, kind of?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, so certainly appreciate everything you all have done to get us to this point. And I, and I think what you're hearing is broad-based support in terms of the spirit of, of this effort. If, if folks seem angsty at all, I think that is because it feels like a little bit we're putting the cart before the horse. But I also understand the necessity of doing so and that we have this kind of unexpected opportunity to buy these at a reduced cost. So with that piece of it, and, and because it is referenced in the, the resolution, in terms of the RFP, how many responses did we have? Was 1.3 million the lowest number that we got in terms of 50 or some comparable number? And it, because even we've been contacted, and as well as you, since this has kind of become public, right? That we're looking at potentially purchasing these from Kalamazoo. In any event, we've had companies reach out and say, hey, we can actually beat that number. And you guys have been copying on all that correspondence. So I'm just curious, I mean, did those folks respond to the RFP? What did that look like? Thank you.
I may defer to HRCS on the specifics of the RFP responses, but I can answer none.
Okay, and that was a while ago, and I'll let you go. That was a while ago. If I'm not mistaken, most of the RFPs did kind of border around, around that number.
We have those available, and we can share those with you. They were recently sent to me. I saw a copy where I read off the 1.3 number from it. But we can send you those copies. I saw four or five documents in the email. Didn't read through all of them in detail, but the 1.3 number is the number that was reported to me and sticks in my head.
Okay, and in terms of, a lot of what, what I've read, a lot of the investigation I've had, we, we've had, you know, communities in Michigan from Detroit to Grand Arbor, or I'm sorry, Ann Arbor to Grand Rapids, obviously K-Zoo, Kalamazoo. Took a look at this, and, and some folks have, you know, done some of these types of sanctioned encampments, I think, much more limited scope than this, maybe. But some of the numbers that they arrived at were, you know, when, when you consider all of the things that go in to supporting a community such as this, anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000 per pod, right? And then I'm talking about annual cost per pod. So I guess I'm wondering, where did you get that 750,000 number from?
So as Delveda stated to you all earlier, this is not a new thing that we've been researching. We've actually had six RFPs come in, but they were all, the, the costs were far beyond our budgets. And so the total that was budgetary number that was given, the $750,000, is from the research and from the other organizations that we have seen that have actually done the work and what they have done and their process. And so that was how we came up with it, after, after looking at all the things that we knew had to be a part of it. And so, and that's minimal because in most cases, it, it, it's going to, I don't think we could, we could go with a just flat number because we're not going to know until we get, we can go with a just flat number because we're not going to know until we get to actually processing, you know, what, right? And so, we're not, we're not, because it's something that we had to take a look at somebody else's process, we're looking at their space, where they are, their demographics, in doing it. So, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and the question, I certainly appreciate, you know, where we're at in the process again.
Yeah.
You know, there's some necessity in terms of the cart before the horse. I, I think the question is born from some concern that once we actually get into doing the work, right, and we actually get into the budgeting, you know, process, that we find that is far, you know, far exceeds the $750,000 number. We've talked a lot tonight about different grants and things like that at the state and federal level drying up. And so, what do we do in perpetuity just to sustain this financially? Or is it even feasible? And if we find that it's not, you know, what do we do with, with these pods? Or, or what do, you know, what, what channels do we look at in terms of, you know, trying to, to make sure that we're funding this in a way that is, it's not creating a hammock for these folks, but what it is truly doing is creating transcendent ascension-type opportunities, right, so that we can really support our unhoused and underhoused folks? So, I'm just curious about that, that aspect of it. In terms of after we approve or disapprove of this, well, should we approve this? Have we at least thought, and I know we're not very far in terms of the planning process, what the community engagement plan looks like?
Well, we have not discussed that in depth, but I can foresee us figuring out avenues to speak to the community, perhaps a community meeting, inviting people to the table to share, you know, to share information and have their input.
In la, okay, that's, that's fantastic. And I really appreciate, you know, the fact that, and I think Councilman Spatafor, through his questioning, was able to extract this, but folks need to realize this isn't council's only bite at the apple, right? And so, I think it's important to underscore. The, the other piece is, and I, and I guess I'm just curious, I do know that there's been some internal conversations with regard to the administration in terms of potential sites. And I know two of the sites that have risen kind of the top of, of, and very early on in the process, obviously, but is Stabinow Park as well as Comstock Park. You talked a little bit about why those two locations have kind of risen to the top, at least internally, for you all, and what types of things we'd be looking at in terms of site location and selection. Thank you.
We, we haven't narrowed down a site, so I'm unable to?
No, let me just stop. I'm sorry. This is, this is actually information that's come from the administration, that 14 or 15 sites have been looked at, but two of the, the sites that are really getting some traction internally would be Stabinow and Comstock. And I know that nobody's going to raise their hand and tell me that's not true because we've had that conversation. But, but what is it about those two locations, and what are we looking for in a location? Thank you.
Mayor Short.
Yeah, and if I, we had that conversation, and I, I may have overstated, so I apologize. Those two locations are the locations with the biggest bathrooms. They both have facilities that were previously used. Stabinow Park has, used to have an ice rink, so they've got large bathrooms. I think I actually told you they both have showers, and that's, that's incorrect, so I apologize. They are the ones with the biggest facilities that can be most easily converted to showers. But I know Kim and our HR, HRCS staff have a list of 15, 20, and honestly, in the last two or three days, four days since this really started getting public, there have been people that have been contacting us, saying, what about this? What about this? What about a church? What about some of the existing homelessness areas? So, those two were referenced by me, and again, I apologize, that's on me, because those have the biggest bathrooms. We have eight or nine parks that, that actually have bathrooms at the parks, and the questions are, you know, which ones are used specifically for, 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 like Morris Park has a shelter thing, I can't think of the term, right next to it, so it's used specifically for people there? And so, which are the ones that, that had it, but were not really being used, and they were bigger? Comstock used to have, has that facility there with a big space next to it. Stabinow has a space way in the back. But those are not necessarily risen to the top, they just have probably the, the easiest convertible shower, or bathrooms into showers. So, again, I apologize. After I told you that, I checked back.
Well, I, I don't want my questions to be interpreted as I would be supportive of not supporting those two locations. I, I don't think that's a decision for, for me as a council member to make, or you as a mayor to make. I think that really needs to be a community-driven conversation.
Great.
I would, I guess, I was just curious about what we're actually looking for, what we would need in a location to actually make this work, and that helps.
Thank you.
They're warming houses. Do we have any further questions? Okay, Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will make a motion for the resolution of the budget amendment for Human Relations and Community Services, HRCS carryforwards from fiscal year 2024 through 2025 to fiscal year 2025 to 2026, emergency transitional housing.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes unanimously. With no further business, we are adjourned at 7:49. We will take a 15-minute break.